Let's call this meeting over. This is our regular meeting, the County Commission. Okay. We need to, let's see, approve the agenda. I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair votes. All right. Now, we have a guest speaker.
No, sir.
Okay. Consent item approved of minutes, meeting minutes for March 2023.
Mr. Chairman, those would be, we don't have those available yet. I know Melinda, if she might not have mentioned it, but she was in training all last week, so we'll have those ready for the next meeting.
That's why you got it on there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's for the next meeting, all right. Agenda items. Okay, resolution for 2023-09, award bid for the airport perimeter fence project. Now, is there any more discussion on that? Is everybody clear on that? I hear a motion on it.
So move, Mr. Chair, that we approve resolution 2023-09 to bid for the airport perimeter fence project.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All right. We're going, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair votes. All right. Now, 2023-10, approved contract with Practical Design Partners. Now, this is just for the Practical Design Partners to start project, for their part of it. Okay. I hear a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to accept the resolution 2023-10, Practical Design, Albany Avenue, overpass.
Okay, got a motion and a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair votes. All right. Now, this is C, Personal Policy Amendment, Travel and Transportation. Now, I hear a motion on that.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, approve as the recommended.
Yes, approve.
Got a second. Any discussion on it?
Just, I see mileage rate now.
Uh, that's a good question. I really don't know top my.
625.
Is it 625?
65.
65.
Point 625. 625.
625.
Yep.
Okay, anymore? If not, let's move on. Got a motion and a second.
We already got it.
We already got them.
Okay. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair votes. All right. Now, the storage, this is D, Storage Facility Lease Agreement Modification, 378 Ozzy Davis Parkway. That's to move it from annually to monthly.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Okay.
The only question I've got on this, Mr. Chairman, is the contract they signed, has that year been fulfilled or are we cutting it short?
Well, they had, this was to, to change the agreement to the new owner, and when I made contact after the last meeting with them, they asked if it was possible to change it to month to month. It used to be yearly.
Yearly.
Okay. Okay. We'll change it from annually to monthly. All right. I hear a motion.
I move that we accept the changing of the storage facility lease agreement modification from yearly to monthly.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair votes. Okay. Now, this is E, Atlas Transportation Plan Proposal.
What I could, I don't have that as a vote. I just didn't know if the consensus was to move forward with them or how the commission might feel about that proposal with Atlas.
I don't know enough about that. I think, I would think we need to table that for.
Well, I thought we had mentioned, somebody mentioned earlier when we were talking about it, that we really need the cities.
Right.
You know, their input on this thing before we vote on it because it's a co-op.
And also, didn't we say we had another bid in from another?
Yes, we have another proposal.
Proposal from?
Yes, sir.
That was WSP, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
I think we, Mr. Chairman, Mr. County Manager, I think we would, I think we'd be better served if we put it on until we find out what the city wants to do with it.
Both of them are about the same price to have it done from the company that Brandon mentioned and this company, and I can, when I meet with them Wednesday morning, I can find out if that would be something they would consider.
We need to figure out too which phase we want to do.
Right.
How much?
Well, that's, that's kind of the whole phases of them in order of how they would, would they would conduct the plan, so.
I think it would be very beneficial for Ware County.
Fifty, hundred, ten, hundred, seventy, two, thirty.
I know everybody else in here has probably already heard, but you know Simmons is closing down. Simmons Mattress Factory. I don't know how many jobs we're going to lose there.
I think it's roughly about 170 or something like that, you know?
Because you know Serta bought Simmons out, and instead of going in and revamping their whole onslaught, they're just closing certain Simmons locations down, and we're one of them.
Can we, can we share, excuse me, both proposals, Scott, share it with the city? And both go over and see what they feel like, and then come up, and then we'll end up one?
I'm total agreement of that.
Yeah, I don't think.
I don't think we need to make a move on it right now until we get.
That would suit me.
We're going to table it or move it, table it.
Table it.
I hear a motion to table it.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All right. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair votes. Okay. All right, F, Proposal Request, Ware County Zoning Resolution Text Amendment. Okay.
Chairman, I make a, make a motion to accept the new zoning resolution text amendment that's set forth.
Okay. Got a motion. Got a second?
Second.
Got a second. All right. Any discussion on it? Not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
No.
Mr. Lucas?
I'm going to have to go with no.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, your turn to vote.
Aye, yeah.
This is on the signs.
I'm sort of lost on that right there.
Is this the distance of it, five hundred to a thousand?
Is that the move, the signs that he's asked for? Is what we, to, we're going to go back and accept the DOT?
You're just changing that requirement.
Okay, I have a motion to, to accept the change, move it back.
Correct, right. Right now, Ware County has a greater requirement than what the DOT does as far as distance between billboard signs. So what this does is it's a, it's asking to reduce from a thousand feet to 500 feet.
Yep. It's just that one certain little piece of highway out there, rest of the county is already 500.
That's, that's correct.
Without one little strip right in there is a thousand. They're wanting to bring it to 500.
I'm going to vote to change it back, whatever's that. Okay. Anything else? Okay, County Manager report.
Um, I don't have anything to add, Mr. Chairman.
Commission come in. I'd like to.
Chairman, I'd just like to remind the public that we'll be having our annual flying, the pilots flying, just said at the airport. Had the first one last year, it was a great success, and this is, the main focus is try to get kids interested in aviation. They're going to have pilots coming in with their own planes, they're going to get the kids ride, they're going to have beverages out there, they're going to have food for the kids, and a guest speaker, I think, supposed to be the, one of the pilots from first place in Savannah.
Airborne.
I can't think of the name of it now, since Savannah had, Bill, like Gulfstream.
Gulfstream.
Gulfstream, of course, he come, and so just prayed that the weather hold off, you know, so I didn't, things played the rain, but anyway, and it's all for every, every kid that wants to come out there, and adults as well, you know, I think he'll enjoy it.
And we had, what about the shirts? Have we had any updates on the shirts when I made that request a couple of weeks ago? Because we had so many people bragging on our shirts.
The last I heard is they have to be bought directly from the supplier, the vendor? That's what I heard, but I can find out for sure.
Because you got, you got several pilots wanting to come in, you know, of course, we're going to make money off the fuel and that kind of stuff, but, and then they also, I brought up that question about feeding them. You know, maybe, I know it's too late in the game right now for it to happen next week, but if we can get ahold of a food truck or something like that and have them out there, you know, we got several of those around.
Okay, anybody else? Anymore? Yeah, Evelyn Denton is here for the library board, and she's got, she wanted us to look at it. Do you have a copy of it?
Um, I do in, in the office, yes.
Okay, do you have several copies, Evelyn, with you?
Do you want to explain to what you want?
Can you come up?
Come up to the podium, please. Okay.
So, I've come up with this candidate submission form. It's just a tool to collect data on somebody that may be interested in getting on the library board, because like when I came up here, that's how I found out about the board, and I was like, well, how do I get on the board? There wasn't a clear process that I was aware of, so when I looked at the constitution and the bylaws recently, the, the Waycross Ward County Library Board of Trustees met a small group of us to look at the bylaws and the constitution, and it was not very clear cut on how you become a member of the library board. So I said, well, why don't we come up with a process, and I developed a submission form, a candidate submission form. It's not an application, it's not a recommendation, nothing like that. So there's no authority that would be lost for any appointing agency, it's just for you to be able to quickly look at somebody's, they got the name, the phone number, address, you know, where they're from, and what's some sort of special talent or skill that you have that you may offer the board, so that you can quickly go, yeah, she's a good candidate, or he's a good candidate, instead of you getting a three-page resume for 15 people that you have to read through and go, eh, that's not going to work for this person, you know, it's not, not a good fit. It's just more of a screening tool, and it's called a candidate submission form. So I brought it up about a week, maybe week and a half ago, I think, for signatures, and I wasn't sure if I needed to bring it and have y'all, you know, like vote on it, or?
Yeah, well, typically, in those cases, we would get it from Martha, from the board, the actual full board approving it and putting their blessings on it, and then come from, from the board directors.
Well, it came, she was there, but she didn't want her hands on it. She said that she had gotten deemed in times past, looking as if she was recommending someone. So I said, well, I don't mind, I'll take it to them. So that's how that came about.
So the library board director is not in favor of what you want to do?
She seemed fine with what I want to do. She didn't want her hands on it, because she said that she had gotten, I don't remember her exact words, but basically she felt like she had gotten in trouble before because she appeared to be recommending someone, and she didn't want her hands on that. I said, no, 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 this is not to recommend anyone, this is just like a screening tool.
So does the full board have support of this document?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Full board right now, the current board, do they have, have they endorsed this?
Well, we all agreed to, you know, submit it to you guys to just look at it, and it's basically a little, one-page data collection, data collection sheet, and at the bottom it says that you've got to turn it into the appointing authority.
Because I, Mr. Chairman asked our board, he represents the county on that board.
I've looked, I've looked at it, and I like the way she's, actually, it would keep us, what, what she's trying to do is keep us from looking at 15, 20-page resumes and having to read 15, 10 or 15 of those, you know, and it's just short and sweet and to the point. You know, it just describes who they are and what their strengths would be that they can offer the library board.
So does the board, I can't get a clear answer here, does the board going to recommend that this form be used?
I'm going to recommend that it be.
Is the board itself going to recommend that this form be used?
Coming to the library board.
Well, they sent me.
They sent her here to talk to us about it.
Yeah, so I was on the special committee for reviewing the constitution and the bylaws, so that's, that's where that came about.
But they haven't voted on it yet.
Is the entire library board approve the form and you want to present it to us?
The way she drew it up, yes.
So.
So I still haven't got an answer.
It's going to be, yeah, they're going to vote on it. They haven't voted on it yet, but they sent her up here to talk to us about it.
Yeah, before we brought it before the whole board, the committee wanted to get your, your input, that you could look at it and say, yes, go forward, or no, don't.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that this committee, that's board members, but it's like a ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Got this form together?
Yes.
So it haven't been endorsed by the full board yet?
Right.
So would, would it be best to have the full board to sign off on that before you brought it to us?
However you say do it, they, they wanted me to bring it to you, and she didn't feel good about bringing it to you herself because of some sort of historical, I don't know, situation.
You say you have a copy of it, Scott?
I do, I can run tomorrow.
Just email it to us.
I believe you have.
I think I did.
I have it on my phone.
Yes, he emailed it to us.
It doesn't show up as well on the phone, but.
It, it's, to me, it's kind of plain, it, it's, it just makes the process a lot shorter than the last time we appointed, because what, what she's asking for is just your basic information and what are your strengths, what can you offer the library board, or the library, the people to represent the community, which?
So like my strength was policy writing. I've written policy for years, so I could say on my little line, what's your special strength or talent or skill? I could say, I've written policy for 10, 20 years. If I were, say, a gardener, that might not be a good fit for the library board. Not saying that you can't be a gardener, I like to garden, but you know, it might be that that's not the right fit for the library board as far as a skill. That, that's all it is. But again, y'all have the appointing authority, that is, it's nothing about taking authority away from you guys at all.
Because that's what, me and her had a conversation outside, and I told her that even if the library board votes it in, which they are, they're going to vote it in, probably going to vote it in Monday coming up, 17th, but they still got to send it to us.
I mean, we'll take whatever information y'all send us, I mean, I don't see it to be deal with.
Yeah, okay. That sounds, sounds good. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And could you make sure that the rest of the commission gets that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more comment, commission? That we adjourn this meeting before we go into executive? We, we got to go to executive.
No, sir, we'll just need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Second, all in favor?
I'll second that.
Got a second. All in favor?
Uh, this is your doing, sir.
Okay.